Thank you all. It is so lovely to see so many people here. Wow, you all are fantastic. Hello, hello. And MCTV, thumbs up. Staff, we're good to go? All right. Welcome to the City of Millbrae's regular city council meeting of December 12th, 2023. We're going to have a bit of a regular council meeting and then go into the formal events. City Clerk, I am calling our meeting to order at 7:09. And if you could please do roll call.
Councilmember Pappan?
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Here.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
All members of the city council are present.
Thank you. And if everyone who is able could please join us in standing for the pledge of allegiance. We have the flag right over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is my last honor, but to welcome all of you with our land acknowledgement, the Millbrae City Council acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral, traditional, and contemporary homeland of the Ramaitush Aloni peoples who are the original inhabitants of San Francisco Peninsula. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, relatives of the Ramaitush community, and to affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. We recognize the Ramaitush Aloni have lived in harmony with nature for millennia, and that to achieve a truly ecologically sustainable future for Millbrae, we must embrace indigenous, traditional, ecological knowledge in how we care for the city's lands, waters, and its peoples. We will continue to uplift and foster a meaningful relationship with the Ramaitush Aloni community, and we encourage all to visit www.ramaitush.org to learn more about the Ramaitush Aloni peoples. With that, next up on our agenda is public comment. Now, this is for something that is not on tonight's city council agenda, and if tonight's city council agenda, and if you have a speaker card, do we have any city clerk?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
And do we have any speaker cards on Zoom?
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. Now, the part that I think most of you are probably here for tonight is the reorganization of the Millbrae City Council. And first, I would like to And first, I would like to welcome our dignitaries. I'm going to start with my fellow council members. So I would like to recognize and say thank you for what has been an incredibly interesting year. Vice Mayor Maurice Goodman, Councilmember Anders Fung, Councilwoman Gina Pappan, and Councilwoman Angelina Cahalan. And I would like you all to give all of us your thoughts and prayers and perhaps a round for what has been an interesting year. But I thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve with you all. Thank you, and I hope we have a good list. It shows you the value of RSVPing. I believe we have, if not Senator Becker, we have his representative, and I might have missed you coming in. But thank you, Senator Becker. We have David, Mr. David Bruda representing Assemblywoman Diane Pappan. We have Assemblymember Evan Lowe from down in Santa Clara County. Welcome. It is our honor to have Presiding Judge Honorable Elizabeth Lee. Sheriff Corpus. Very good. Welcome. Our police chief, Eamon Allen. In the back. Fire chief, Ken Giacoto. Ambassador of Malta, Dr. Jeffrey Carmel Zerob. And the Consul General of Malta, Louis Villa. And Consul General of Japan, on behalf of the Consul General of Japan, Haejimi Kishimori. For those of you who don't know, we are a sister city with Malta, with Mosta in Malta, and a friendship city with Hanyu, Japan. And we're hoping for a celebration next year. I believe it is the 70th anniversary of Hanyu in Japan. So looking forward to that. We have, and I think we have Tony Bayudan representing Supervisor David Canepa with us tonight. With that, also recognizing a large number of our former mayor, so if you can, please welcome former Mayor Wayne Lee, former Mayor, former Mayor Robert Gotchak, former Mayor Marge Carla Pietro, former Mayor Dan Quigg, former Mayor Paul Sato, and former Mayor Janet Fogarty. Absolutely not least. And Mark Hirschman. Former Mayor Mark Hirschman. With that, we also, like all of us who work for, we get a lot of our work done because we have committees and commissions. And tonight, we have representatives, and if you could all please stand. We, I'm not laming everyone because we have a pretty good collection here tonight, but it's lovely to have you all. But we have from our senior commission, and I see the ladies right here. Ladies, if you could stand. We have our Millbrae Culture Arts Advisory Committee here. Please stand. We have our senior Sister City Commission members also with us tonight. We have our Economic Vitality Committee with us tonight. And our Planning Commission and our Park and Rec Commissioners are with us tonight. And here I go with the people that I forgot. Mayor Ruben Holibur, former Mayor Ruben Holibur. We also, we also have with us from Foster City, actually, let me go first. We have the Mayor Tiger Biggerstick of Pacifica. Welcome. And Foster City Councilwoman Stacy Jimenez. And if we have other council members, we try to, if you are, forgive me if I've missed you, or run up to the city clerk so we capture that you are here, and we are grateful that you are with us tonight. And we also have, I think, have I? We do have at least one, if not more, of our school board members, Lynn Ferrario with us, and Loriann Richardson of our Chamber of Commerce. Oh, and Millbrae, Millbrae is actually, we have two representatives on the San Mateo Unified High School District, and we have Teri Chavez, who represents half of us from San Bruno. All right. Oh, and we do have our two other school board members, Maggie Musa and Clarabel Trami, our latest. Thank you. All right. If I have missed anyone, forgive me. And again, I am grateful that all of you are here today. I'd also like to recognize our city manager, Tom Williams. Our city manager, Elaine Tran. Our city, city clerk, Elaine Tran, Elaine, I just gave you a promotion. Sorry, Tom. Our city attorney, Joan Casman. And actually, for me as the mayor and for our incoming mayor, Mr. Gonzalez, who basically keeps us doing everything and making sure that we're always in the right place for that, who is? Eduardo Gonzalez on the end there. And a final recognition, we have a lot of our staff members, our department heads. If we could have our finance director, Mike Sung, Public Works Director, Sam Batista, Community Development Director, Andy Morgeson, and our Assistant City Manager, Isabel Carlos, please stand. We get the glory up here, but they do all the work. So again, staff, it has been a great year, and thank you for everything with that. Their work has been supporting me and for all of us. It's been commendable, and we're grateful to have their continued service for all of us. In the last year, we've had countless accomplishments as a city. Our city is growing rapidly. We actually hit the magic 23,000 number. The latest population count houses at 23,083 people. So thank you Gateway Project on that. And we're growing rapidly with housing, commercial developments, our first biotech campuses coming on board, all electric, the first all-electric biotech campuses in the country. We've had many community projects. It's been a little over a year that the rec center is there, and we're still kind of moving in. But our fully certified Montessori preschool is here. Get your kids on the list now on that, as well as increasing job opportunities and accessibility in Millbrae. It's been really an honor and proud to be, for everything that we have accomplished this year. And I'm confident in the future of the City of Millbrae before us as I step away from office this year. The future that we all want, which includes opportunity and security for our families, a rising standard of living, welcoming, safe neighborhoods, and sustainability, is within the plans that we have laid out. By working together, we have already accomplished so much, and by continuing to work together, we can continue to maintain the community that we are all so proud to call home. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your mayor this year. It's truly been an honor. And I do have one tiny, tiny request of staff and city council. This is my eighth year on city council. I come from the environmental field. With the things, the challenges of the last year, we didn't get our tree ordinance, but I am really, and I'm looking at my staff, we're going to bring that tree ordinance. And to the Boy Scouts out there, we're going to plant trees next year, because I know you keep asking me, and we're going to get that tree ordinance done and work on noise and climate change and all of those things. With that, we're going to move on to comments, presentations from dignitaries, organizations, and members of the public to the outgoing mayor. His Excellency, Dr. Godfrey Carmel Zerob.
It's easier like this. Outgoing Mayor, Mayor-elect, other members of the head table, honorable guests, ladies and gentlemen, and other dignitaries. Let me start by congratulating the Mayor Anne Schneider for her work during her tenure in office. I thank her for her work in keeping strong the link between Millbrae and its sister city of Mosta in Malta. As I speak to you on the eve of the 49th anniversary of the Republic of Malta and on your change in leadership, I want to reflect on two pillars that the Republic of Malta was built on: peace and prosperity. Two pillars of which every Maltese citizen, be they in Malta or the United States, holds close to their heart. Like Millbrae, Malta has strived for peace. Be it at the end of World War II, when we hosted President Roosevelt and Prime Minister Churchill before the Alta talks, or when we hosted President Bush and Secretary Gorbachev to agree on the end of the Cold War, or through hosting the Ukraine peace talks last month and the UN Security Council resolution for peace in Gaza. We strive to ensure that the olive trees that were planted in Millbrae, Mosta, and Ramallah continue to grow, provide shade and shelter from the natural elements, and bear the fruit of peace. Not only for this generation, but for our children and our children's children. Just like the three olive trees, peace is key for prosperity. A prosperity that the Maltese diaspora has helped to build here in Millbrae. I end by wishing the best to the incoming Mayor Fung and Deputy Mayor Goodman, and augur that during their tenure, they will continue to work for peace and prosperity through the strengthening of the bond between Millbrae and Mosta and the Maltese diaspora that lives in this city. Finally, I take this opportunity to share with you the wishes of all the people of Malta for a peaceful and joyous festive season and a healthy and prosperous 2024. I end in Maltese with the phrase, "El Milite Taiep," happy Christmas, "O Seno Jnida," a happy new year, "Saha Ugrazi," health and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Manager, I think you're up next. Oh, you're up next.
All right, if I could have Eduardo help me here. So we have a tradition here in the City of Millbrae that the last day that the mayor is in office as mayor, we usually give the American flag that flies over City Hall. But since Mayor Snyder has been mayor now twice in the last three years, the last time we gave her the US flag. But part of what we did is we created a Millbrae flag, City of Millbrae flag, a couple of years ago. It was a vote of the citizens and somebody designed it. So what we have today, Mayor for you, is a Millbrae flag that has flown at City Hall on your last day as mayor. In the case, we've got our little M, but it's the City of Millbrae on there. And then, of course, the first time that Anne Schneider was mayor was during the pandemic. So everything was on Zoom and remote, and she's learned how to use a gavel this year. So Mayor, while you're in person, here is a commemorative gavel for your term as mayor. And lastly, another great tradition we have is from our public works yard, making a sign for outgoing Mayor Anne Schneider. So Anne Schneider Way, front and back. So Mayor Snyder, you can display that on your garage door, in your home, in your office, so. And I would like to say, Mayor, as a city manager, we've had a lot of accomplishments, like you said, and there's going to be a lot that is going to be communicated tonight. But I would like to thank you and all the council members, but for your leadership. And the last year has just been remarkable. And so we've come a long way, and we'll continue to make great progress. So thank you for your leadership and the great partnership that we have. So much appreciated. And congratulations on a great year.
Now, we have people from Pacifica and Foster City. This is sort of our thing. Congressman Mullin, we have a street named after Congressman Mullin, and it's his office in DC. So hint, hint. How do we thank our higher office holders for everything they do for us? All right, next up is the oath of office. And first, I'm going to, first, we, City of Millbrae has already chosen who are mayor and vice mayor. It's a little bit different, and hopefully something we will do in the future so that these events are one of gayety and celebration and take some of the tension out. And it is my honor to introduce Martina and Destiny Goodman, who are going to give the oath of office, and seating of Vice Mayor Maurice Goodman. Please join us.
Testing.
All right.
Hello.
Repeat after us. Like this? Oh. All right, raise your right hand. I, Maurice Goodman.
I, Maurice Goodman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take all obligations this freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of which I'm about to enter.
That's it.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Good evening, Millbrae, and good evening to our guests. I would first like to start by thanking my family for joining us tonight. My wife, Martina, who has spent yet another anniversary with me as I serve our community. Thank you. This is our 11th, and this is probably our fifth swearing-in or elected office as she's joined me on our anniversary. So thank you. I appreciate it, and I'll make it up to you. Thank you. To my daughter, Destiny, who over the past year has begun true face-to-face instruction at San Francisco State and also beginning to explore civic engagement and all that it brings in today's society. I am forever proud of you, of your courage, your grit, and your compassion. To my son, Malcolm, thanks for taking the time out of your busy schedule of eating us out of house and home. Just kidding. But thank you for your thoughtful approach to getting me to be less preachy and a better listener. I love you. And to all the elected officials that have joined us tonight to make this evening a very special evening, not just for myself, but for our incoming Mayor Anders Fung. So thank you all. I look forward to continuing to courageously work with my collaboratively with my fellow council members and with the city staff on this year's projects and events. We have had a very successful year, beginning with me hosting our council's first district town hall, where I heard from you, our residents, about issues that matter the most, like safe routes to school, neighborhood traffic calming program, a Royal Seco storm drain bypass project, and continue to work on economic development and creating more jobs. bypass project, and continue to work on economic development and creating more jobs within the city of Milbrae. And I'd also like to thank some of our partners, like Republic Urban, for their partnership with the Milbrae Lions Club to provide two scoreboards at Green Hills Elementary School and Taylor Middle School. Upper Hill Crest Sub Basin Four Pavement Repair Project. The project was awarded in construction, and is in construction. The project shall include pavement repairs, rehabilitation, grinding of existing pavement, and recompacting the existing aggregate base, subbase placing hot mix asphalt concrete, as well as our many community events that we were able to have. We had our very first Juneteenth celebration in this very building. It was a success. We had our 75th anniversary events, Arden Wine Festival, Milbrae Machines Car Show, and Milbrae Lions. And I hope one thing will continue, that we continue to expand on our festival offerings as we live up to our new nickname of the City of Festivals. In closing, I'd like to just provide you a little bit of insight into my why. As a child, I was not always seen. I grew up in housing projects of San Francisco with less than most. It was at that age of eight where my mother had died, and things didn't get any easier. So I committed my adult life to others and being to others what I so desperately needed and wanted in the shadows as I was stripped of dignity, of a voice, and of my humanity. So I learned, and I continue to learn, to serve and lead with love. Let me end by asking a question of you all. Are we a city that talks about each other, or are we a city that talks with each other? Are we a city that prefers to tear down or to build up? To that, I say no. Let us see each other, let us hear each other, and let us learn to trust each other as we reset our collective efforts to make Milbrae a place in the sun for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and good luck in 2024. Next, we have, it's really an honor tonight to have our next person swearing-in, incoming Mayor Feng. It is my honor to welcome the Honorable Elizabeth Lee, who was appointed to the Superior Court of San Mateo County Bench in July of 2005, and is the first Asian-American judge to serve on the bench in San Mateo County. She is also the first Asian presiding Chief Justice. Please welcome Judge Lee. Honorable Judge Lee to the podium, and she's got a few words for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Schneider, for those very kind words. And I want to welcome everybody and say what is just an honor for me to be in this room with Anders Feng, our new mayor, or about to be our new mayor. It's quite an honor to stand on this platform and welcome your newest mayor, an immigrant from Asia, the first immigrant to come and become an elected official, the mayor of Milbrae. I see many of you in this audience, I recognize several of you, working with you on the courts, working with you on the council. And my son was in Boy Scout here in Troop 355, so his name is on the Eagle Scout wall.
We love 355.
And the plaque was rescued before the fire, and now I see this beautiful building that you all have contributed to with the leadership of Maurice and Anderson, Mayor Schneider, and all the others. So it's my honor to swear Mayor-elect in, and I know he comes from a humble background. And he came here to this country and started his own business, was an engineer for Cisco, and did a myriad of other activities before becoming the planning commissioner, one of the planning commissioners here from Milbrae. With his broad background, his work ethic, his ability to work with various peoples from different backgrounds and walks of life, I'm confident he's going to be the mayor you want to serve, and he will build this community to be even better than it has been in the past. So it's my pleasure to swear you in.
At this time, if I can have my family to join me on stage, Margaret and our daughter, Adrienne, and also Anderson, if you can help join the stage, please.
All right, Anderson, I'm going to ask that you repeat after me, and I noticed that you caught your hand on your Bible. I, Anders Kai Fai Feng.
I, Anders Kai Fai Feng.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any purpose of evasion and.
Mental reservation.
Mental reservation and purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
At this time, if I can have a little bit of help, Eduardo, if you don't mind, I'd like to move the podium down on the floor. Wow. My fellow Milbrae residents, I stand before you today, humbled by the expectations before us, grateful for the trust you have all bestowed upon me, and also mindful of the progress we have made by my predecessors and every single one of us in our beloved city. By no happenstance that I begin my first address to you as your mayor, right here, not 12 inches higher, but right here, because I am one of you. I am one of us. We are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, all of you. I want to take a moment and thank our Mayor Ann Schneider for her dedicated service to our city. Her lifelong passion for environmental justice has raised the bar for all of us, and protects the right to clean air and safe drinking water. I also want to thank her for her grace and generosity throughout this transition. Forty fine men and women have taken this oath before me. These words have been given in the rising sun of prosperity and in the challenging moments of blazing winds. And yet, throughout these 75 years, Milbrae marched forward, not only in the wisdom of those in the elected offices, but most importantly, the commitment of all 23,000 of us who cares about the neighbor next to you and be true to the city we call home. So it must be this generation of Milbrae residents that we are faced with the challenge before all of us. The high interest rate and the challenging business environment has recently caused businesses to close. Our city and the entire state are looking for ways to end homelessness. Our downtown still has empty storefronts, and many of us have our windows broken every day. The seniors and our most vulnerable are getting abused and attacked, and our ever-rising cost of living. And we're still challenged with where our children's and grandchildren's going to find a place to live close to home. And I know, because I've spoken to many of you, that many residents felt our voices have not been heard. These are indicators of major headwinds and challenges. But tonight, I say to you all that these challenges are real, and they are happening in front of our eyes every day. But today, as I look into the eyes, and the strength of this community gather in this cold winter night, because you have chosen hope over fear, unity and purpose over discord, collaborations over arguments. And on this night, we come to proclaim that despite all the challenges ahead, that we will continue to push forward. Milbrae is a true example of an advanced citizenship. And let this be tonight, that we reaffirmed our shared common spirit, to chose our better self, to carry forward that precious gift, that no matter where you were born, what you might look like, and what language you speak at home, and let this day be the living testimony that we are all equal and afforded the same opportunity to thrive, to succeed, and to lead in our shared community. In reaffirming our greatness, this success is never given. It must be earned. And our own pathway to success has never been, and will never be, a shortcut or settle for less. It has always been those who rolled up our sleeves, the doers, the risk-takers, those who chose actions and progress over fear and leisure. Some were celebrated, but these folks come to work every day not because of fame or accolade, but because they believe that the success of our community is greater than the sum of our individual accomplishments. This is where our journey continues. We're the most important and innovative gateway to the world for the Bay Area. Our residents and businesses are just as productive as our challenges begin. Our hotels are just as welcoming as before the pandemic. Our carmakers are just as committed to decarbonizing our commute, and our life scientists are just as innovative as they have ever been in finding new ways to keep all of us in good health. So there isn't a moment to waste. Starting tonight, we must roll up our sleeves and pick up our pace, and push forward to work with all the regional and statewide agencies to solidify our station development and turn our transit-rich potentials into prosperities. Our staff has been working hard in the last few years. We're blessed with the new life science opportunities, and that will bring in 4,000 new high-paying jobs and create a new corporate headquarters right here in our city. These new daytime additions will energize our microeconomy and become an economic engine to our local businesses. And I'm excited to report tonight that we have just successfully secured a $1.5 million grant funding from the Transportation Authority to enhance the safety of our motorists, our cyclists, our pedestrians on El Camino Real. It will kickstart our Grand Boulevard initiative. Has the member happened? He's been championed for that. And revitalize our El Camino Real into a vibrant, people-friendly place by making the corridors safer and more comfortable for all users who wants to work, live, and entertain in our city. Now, this is the beginning of our work to make our city better. Take a stroll through our city, through downtown. There is work to be done everywhere. We need to incentivize our downtown property owners with sensible density bonus to enhance our streetscape and business opportunities. Our local businesses will be more successful with our new Business Improvement District. Our next generation, who aspire to work, live, and contribute in Milbrae community, needs an affordable place to live closer to our downtown. The less-than-fortunates need to be able to receive the assistance they need and reenter the community in a more productive way. We will keep our focuses on core services, keeping our streets and parks clean, safe, and accessible. And most importantly, our residents, our businesses deserve strong public safety. This is what we can do, and this is what we must do. Now, there are always those who question our intent. Some might choose to say that we're against housing for seniors and families. Some even use the old relic from the Institutional Racism Vault. But I would recommend to look at the demographic of our community. Look around tonight. And what the cynics fail to understand is that our record in housing production speaks for itself. Just as an example, between El Rancho, Office Depot, 1301 Broadway, and the TOD projects, we've made available over 1,500 units of new housing opportunities to family, to children, and our seniors. We've also helped over 200 unhoused persons finding temporary and permanent housing in the last 18 months, and connected many more much-needed services that will help them reenter society more productively. We at Milbrae, we're a city of passion and a city of compassion. We're ready to partner and mutually collaborate with anyone and everyone who sees us as a with anyone and everyone who sees us as a respectful and equal partner and to deliver solutions that our people expect and deserve. So the question we ask today is not which jurisdiction has the proper narrative, but whether we are listening to our people, whether it is rewarding and providing pathways to success to every willing heart, those who are putting in the hard work, playing by the rules, and earning their way through. And those of us who manage the public resources are charged to be a steward to our city and our county. And we're all to be held accountable to spend wisely and effectively. And for those who may not understand how we communicate as a government, it is our job, our job, to speak in ways that you can understand, to bring people along. Because no matter what language you speak at home, what religion you may have, we hold the belief that we're all fundamentally raised as reasonable and honest people. And we're here to ensure we provide for the greater goods. So let us mark this day with the remembrance of who we are and how far we have traveled as we celebrate our 75th anniversaries. Let us get started with the work ahead, and let us give thanks to everyone who contributed to our success every day. As your mayor, I look forward to 2024. And I look into the eyes of my neighbors, my partners, my friends. And I know deep inside my heart that the future is bright and our best days are ahead of us. Thank you, everybody. May God bless our place in the sun. Thank you so much.
Before we adjourn, the Vice Mayor of Daly City, Jocelyn Manalo, has joined us. And then... Oh, she's the mayor now. Mayor now, sorry. Excuse me. The new mayor of Daly City, Jocelyn Manalo. And the new mayor of South San Francisco, James Coleman. And I'm sorry if we missed anybody else.
Thank you so very much, everybody, for being here today and bear with our meeting. I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Test. Congratulations, Mayor. Is this on? Can you hear me? Test, test. Here we go. And ladies and gentlemen, real quick, if I can have your attention. We will now... Mills High School Jazz Band will be playing. Thank you very much for being here. We're ready to go.